We are going to call the meeting of the Akron Public Schools Board of Education for February 10th, 2020 to order. Roll call, please.
Dr. Akbar?
Here.
Mr. Alexander?
Present.
Ms. Autry?
Here.
Mr. Bravo?
Here.
Dr. Hall?
Aye.
Mrs. Mansfield?
Here.
Mrs. McCutcheon?
Here.
Thank you. To lead us in the Pledge of Allegiance tonight, from a 12th grader at North High School, our student representative to the Board of Education, Munisha Rai.
I pledge allegiance to the flag of the United States of America and to the Republic for which it stands, one nation, under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all.
All right. Community and school reflections. Would anyone like to start?
I'll start.
Thank you.
I had the opportunity to attend an OSBA, a High School Boards Association workshop on creating family-friendly schools. And it talked about the conditions that establish a welcoming environment and family engagement, and the idea that the positive relationships that we build with our community members help to create effective advocacy for our students. And things such as student achievement and attendance and self-discipline, those things all increase, and alcohol, drug use, and violence decrease. So, working with families helps us create successful opportunities for all of our kids. And then I also want to give a shout-out to the high school jazz bands for a very impressive concert Saturday night, and that began the winter concert series. So, I look forward to more of those.
Thank you. Anyone else?
Sure, yes. I would love to jump in here. So, today, as a matter of fact, I was at Glover Elementary School today, and the principal there was actually my 5th and 6th grade, grade school teacher over at David Hill Elementary School. And so, when I was talking to the assistants, they asked me, "Well, you were a former student. Like, how is that possible?" And I said, "Well," I said, "Well, in 5th grade, it was her 17th year of teaching." So, of course, they're doing the math, and they figure out that she's been with us for 50 years here in APS. So, yes, so I was very honored to spend some time with her today over at Glover Elementary School, Mrs. Mancetti. So, yeah. So, absolutely. So, just wanted to share that.
Thank you. Ms. Autry?
Sure. So, since we last met, I was able to visit a few schools in the East Cluster. I visited East and Robinson, and it was just a really nice visit. Got to meet all of the elementary classes and explain what the school board actually does, how it affects them. And they wanted me to bring a message back. They were hoping that school was canceled today.[226.73][226.73](Laughter) But it was nice also at East to see the Bridgestone automotive program run by Mr. Groom, and then also the KeyBank banking program was also nice to see. And then I also was able to attend the City Series Girls Championship basketball game over at Firestone between Booktoe and East. Really exciting, high-energy crowd, and congratulations to both of the teams, Booktoe, Kimon Garfield, and congratulations to Booktoe, champions.
Mrs. Mansfield?
Mr. Bravo and I were over at Mason on Friday morning for their kickoff to their Kindness Month. And this is the second year that I've had a chance to participate in that, and it is so much fun. There were representatives from police and fire in Akron, lots of downtown admin were there, the teachers lineup, Patrick and I were there. And basically, we got to high-five and clap in the students and welcome them and tell them how glad we were to have them there that day. Some, one of the kids said they felt like a celebrity, and there were a couple of them that wanted to go through more than once. So, they enjoyed it so much, and they loved the attention. And, you know, then you get them, you know, you remember being that 11-year-old, 10-year-old girl, and you, you don't even want to, you don't want anybody to look at you, let alone give you high-fives as you walk through. So, they're all walking through like this, pretending like we're really not there. So, it was really fun. But you could tell that they appreciated it. And Angela Harper does a fantastic job over at Mason, and she is just a great principal and loves the engagement from not just the community, but the board. So, if you ever get a chance, I do have a few more things that their family engagement person sent me that I will make sure that you all have. They do a great art show and ice cream social every year, and so, we'll get those on your calendars for sure. It was fantastic and good times.
I'm going to comment on one thing, because I have something, but I brought the wrong note, so I'll report on it next board meeting. I did go to the Equity Symposium in Washington, DC, along with Mr. Akbar, Dr. Akbar, and Dr. What's your name?[385.43][385.43](Laughter) That's my North High school name. But we went to the Equity Symposium, and we also were there for the Advocacy Institute, and so, I'll bring that forward. But I just want to comment, we did go to the Jazz Concert, I call it Concert, on Saturday, and the kids did an outstanding job.
It was amazing.
I mean, I thought I was at a Jazz Concert. You thought some professionals were actually playing, and it was nice to see all the high schools come in and play, and they did an outstanding job. So, I just had to say something about that, and they did a good job putting it together with Ms. Wilson over there and Mr. Graham.
Thank you.
Dr. Akbar?
So, since the last meeting, I also went to the Equity Summit, and I won't, Symposium, I should say. And the best thing I think it did was it helped us look at, once you create an equity policy, what are some of the things that the district should be doing? And it gave us some tools and questions that we should be asking. So, I thought that that was really, really good takeaways. Since the last meeting, I've visited Firestone, CLC, Case, and Miller South. All of those visits went well. One particular highlight was at Case. They did a great job of welcoming me. They had a poster board where all the students signed. And then one of the students thought I was the Vice President of the United States. So, I told him I'll take that. So, that was, that was pretty cool.
That's funny.
Yeah, it was funny, actually. Then, then also, I attended a few of the LeBron James Family Foundation events, their Town Hall, some other events. And then there was a community meeting about the housing project that they're, they're building off roads that they're doing. And there were some community concerns, as well as a lot of community hopes for what it, what it, what it will bring for our students and their families needing housing security. So, I thought that that was pretty good to hear, and that, that meeting was held at Ennis a week or so ago. So, thank you.
Thank you. Anyone else? Munisha, did you also want to report out from North?
Yes. So, hello, everyone. My name is Munisha Rai. I'm senior at North High School in biomedical science, pathogen, of health and human service. North High School is ranked in the top 5% of the most diverse schools in Ohio. There are currently 800 students enrolled with students who are journeying over 20 countries. There are approximately 19 different languages spoken at my school and countless cultures. On March 6th, at 8:00 AM, in the North High School auditorium, we are hosting our annual culture fair. The culture fair is a culmination of all of our students' stories coming together. Students will have fashion, so cultural dance, singing, and food. Congolese, Nepali, Mexican will wear their culture dress, dance, and sing to their native music. It's going to be a lot of fun, so everyone is invited. Mrs. DeGlasio, the ELA teacher, is the coordinator of the culture fair. While my friends are at the culture fair, I will be interviewing for the 115, $1,500 Rotary Scholarship. I have accumulated GPA of 3.96, and I'm ranked second in my class. I'm already excelled at the University of Akron, and I'm the first person in my family to go to college.
Wow.
I arrived in the United States in 2012 from Nepal. I spoke a very limited amount of English, so it was hard for me to communicate with people because of my language barrier. Everything was new and strange. For example, I had never eaten peanut butter and jelly, pizza, or quitos. The education system in Akron Public School is very different, but much better than in Nepal. There are more resources like staff technologies and programs to help students succeed. The staff at North High School include family liaisons, refugee liaisons, and interpreters. Monthly meetings are held with the families of international students. The interpreting staff attends the meetings and provides parents with school information like how to report, how to read a report card, and graduation requirements. All calls, mailings, and videos to families are translated, translated into different languages. There are even videos translated into different languages on how to select a pathway. It is very helpful for my mom to receive all calls in Nepali. In Nepal, there aren't any computers or Chromebooks available in the classroom. At North, having technology helps me and my peers go deeper into our studies and understand English language better.
Huh.
A program like JAWX gives students opportunity to exceed in leadership skills, develop employability skills, and soft skills. Currently, through JAWX, I'm employed at Global Kitchen as a server. It allows me to use soft skills such as communicating effectively and teamwork. I have taken advantage of opportunities that are given to me, no matter how big or small. I want more opportunities to be provided for students like me who are willing to learn and take advantage of the opportunities. Mr. Bruce Alexander has served as a mentor to me. Mr. Alexander helped me to improve on my leadership skills by giving me strategies on how to be a good leader. For example, he always tells me to be more confident. I feel that he will be willing to help me if I ever need any help, so that makes me feel even more confident. So, more mentors like Mr. Bruce Alexander are needed to help students in Akron Public Schools to take advantage of the opportunities. In closing, some of my fellow student board members sat on the American Heart Association panel on vaping. Edison Johnson will provide a report about the panel at an upcoming board meeting. Thank you.
Thank you for that. We have no requests to address the board tonight or recognitions. We do have a presentation, however, on discipline data, an update, and I'm going to turn that over to Mr. Ram.
So, tonight, I'd like to give an update on discipline data and focus on kindergarten to 3rd grade data specifically, and then introduce a promising practice that we've talked about in board meetings in the past. As we go through initially the data, I will move into introducing a couple of staff members from Finley that are going to talk to you about the PACS program and show you a couple of examples in action of what they're doing at Finley as the team has evolved the program to be more of a whole-school utilizing the program. And then they're going to show you what the data impact of that has been, which will be, I think, pretty groundbreaking stuff that they're going to show. But, so, I'll just move into that. I put up this initial slide just as something that we often think about as a district as we're impacting student behavior, is there, there's kind of these pillars that we look at in how we impact student behavior. And you've got to think about how roles are made and how we address rules with our students, having students have a voice in those roles, and also be able to respond to when they have broken a rule. The rules have to be predictable, and, and they have to be the same rules at all the time and to all students. And then they have to be fair. The consequences need to be equal to what the misbehavior is. And those are, those are actually applied, not just as school rules, those are applied in a more human, global way. Parents would tell you this, this is not groundbreaking ideas. Those are very substantially across all parts of the human experience. So, when we look at our district focus, this goes into both the Safe Learning Center, so we look at learning conditions. It also actually hits on all three areas because we want to obviously involve the families and parents into student behaviors as well. When we then move into the data, and I'm going to have, like I mentioned, Finley with Brian and Deborah are going to provide some information about Finley specifically, but I want to go over data first, just a, more of a global view of data, discipline data for the school district. So, first of all, the first general comparison, obviously, is when you look at last year's suspension data versus this year's suspension data. And if you remember back to when the state passed the law that required us to reduce discipline data for K to 3, the first year was kind of set, last year, the first year was to set a baseline. This year, there needs to be a reduction, as the state has shown us, that we have to reduce by 25%. You can see that we're right by that pace, so we're doing a good job as a school district to hit on that. I think a question, anytime I say this, a question that should trigger in everybody's mind should be "how?" So, I'm going to go to that, but I think that's an important question to always think about. So, you want to, one of the things that any good organization that looks at data is don't just look at one simple marker of the data, but look a little more complexly. So, here, we've taken the data, and we've broken it down by grade level, so that way you can then start to see, are there different trends per grade level? And if you look at it, there are. I mean, one thing that stands out to me is the kindergarten numbers. There's, there's actually a decrease from last year to this year, but it's not a whole lot. Like, it's pretty comparable. The other grade levels seem to show marked, more marked reductions. Kindergarten, I think, is one area that I would want to dig more into when you go from 104 to 91. But, it's not even that simple, because then you have to look at how many kindergarten students do we have? Like, you've got to really dig into the data, and just looking district-wide at it is one aspect, but it's not the only aspect, is really the point I'm trying to explain in that. Then we also looked at our data, and we were looking at the school days, like the days of the week, and are there different trends in those data? And any, I, every teacher, I think, would tell you something about school days. Mondays are hard. I, I think I have said that since I was an assistant principal in this district. I say it down here in my department now all the time. Mondays are challenging days. And you can then ask the question of why are they challenging days? And I, everybody would have their opinion. My opinion would be is Monday's rough. It's after the weekend. Stuff happens. Things come back to the school. Monday's a challenging day. But then, when you look at the data, does the data necessarily bear that out, or is that just what we think? And that's an interesting thing, to then look at the data, because when you look at the data, it actually shows that suspensions, last year, Wednesday was like a peak number. This year, it's Wednesdays and Thursdays are peak numbers. But Mondays are really, are really low for suspensions for kindergarten, or for elementary K to 3 students. So, it's just, it's just interesting to look at those things and then really dig into the data to figure out what are the root causes of that. Again, it's not a, there's not an absolute answer that you get just from looking at data. You have to dig deeper into the data, but I, I do want to give you that kind of more global district view of it, too. Then we looked at the types of discipline that is occurring. What are, how are the code, how are the codes put in to our software system? So, you look at disruptive behavior, and disruptive behavior's kind of become a common code that's used because it's, it catches a lot of different types of behavior. So, that's naturally going to be a high number always. That, it's just a big category for discipline or student behavior. And you can see there's a pretty significant decrease in that from last year to this year. Fighting, there's been a decrease, but not, I wouldn't say substantial decrease. And then the other ones, there, there's been a decrease across the board. You can see inappropriate physical contact, which actually is like student by student. It's not student-staff, but that's been a pretty big reduction this year as So, what I want to roll into next is give you a practice that a school dis, or a school building in our district is doing with Finley. And I'm going to have two staff members from Finley come up so they can go over what they're doing at that school. There's a couple of videos in the presentation as well. I know the board members that have been around for a while have heard us all talk about PACS. They've heard me talk about PACS a lot. The new board members maybe are not as familiar with it, but I also believe you probably are too, but I want you to have some more.
All right. I've heard it there once near the microphone, but I have a relatively loud voice, so I'm going to use my teacher voice so I can think I can get to the whole room. First of all, I'd like to say good evening, Dr. Jane, Dr. McWilliams Woods, esteemed board members and guests. My name is Brian Johnson, and I am the music teacher at Finley CLC. I'm in my 30th year of teaching in the Akron Public School system. Gotcha. And my 27th year at Finley CLC. My colleague is Deborah Ginn, who is in her 20th year of teaching, 3rd year at Finley CLC, and last year's Finley Teacher of the Year. Today, we're going to tell you about the PACS program. PACS is a program which empowers our students to create the kind of students, classroom, and ultimately, the type of school they want to attend, and to give them a sense of pride about creating that type of environment. PACS has been around since the 1960s, but it's been prevalent in Ohio for the past 10 years. We've decided to concentrate today's presentation on what we have seen and learned at Finley CLC. I would like to draw your attention to a couple of things regarding our discipline last year versus this year's discipline data in terms of average events per day. In agreement with House Bill 318, to which Mr. Ramblin referred, we are well on our way to meeting that goal with only 2 incidents this year in grades K through 3, as compared to the maximum goal of 22, which we are trying, we are only supposed to get to. And I would specifically like to draw your attention to the, the charts at the bottom. And as you notice, on the left is our attendance without out-of-school suspension, and on the right is our attendance with out-of, oh, that's discipline, that's something, I'm sorry, I'm a, a slide ahead. But, I think we can go to the next one. There we go. This is our attendance. And as you can see, on the left is our attendance without out-of-school suspension, and on the right is our attention with out-of-school suspension. So, you can see by our numbers in the chart that the out-of-school suspension does not affect our overall attendance. As indicated by the data, our students want to be here.
Being a teacher is about saving children and saving the future, period. These are the words of Dr. Dennis Embry, prominent prevention scientist and president of the PACS Institute. His research, his years of research and work to make the world a better place for all children has changed our classroom. There is an adage, "You get more of what you focus on." PACS helps all who use it to focus on the good. We begin with a vision. Together with students, the creation of a nurturing environment takes shape. Class, we are going to work together to make our classroom the most wonderful classroom in the world. What would we like to see more of, do more of, feel more of, hear more of? The responses from 6-year-olds were astounding. And you can see that in our PACS vision chart that we use every day. That's the chart on the left. See more happy things, people we love, people in the class listening, people in the class learning. Hear more quiet, people saying nice things, music, using their manners. Do more, work, have fun, help each other, smile, feel more happy, safe, excited, loved, part of a family. Conversely, part of the vision includes those things we, we want to see, do, feel, and hear less of. And that, you will see the chart on the very right. Of all the categories, those things the students want to feel less of made a lasting impression. Feel less sad, mad, hurt, bullied, lonely. The vision sets the purpose for why we do what we do as PACS leaders every day. The chart in the middle is our plan for reading book. Our PACS plan is why the students were able to run their own reading rotations for the substitute teacher while the teacher was away at the winter school improvement workshop. We better our classrooms, our school, our community, our world by bettering ourselves. Six languages are represented in one 1st-grade classroom: Arabic, Burmese, English, Nepali, Pashto, and Spanish. PACS is a universal language of belonging and safety.
Okay, Regina, would you like to talk about a PACS person today?
PACS.
Somebody, a patient.
And what happened?
They go to the nurse, and then put them on it.
And then what happened to them afterwards? They became?
Friends.
They became friends? Because who helped them become friends?
Me.
You did, because you are a PACS teacher.
Yes.
And congratulations to three members of the PACS.[1689.12][1689.12](Laughter)
PACS is a universal school-wide initiative, and PACS, like music, is a universal language.
Is PACS hands and feet? That is pretty impressive, you guys. And if you're not quite sure where you sit, just sit quiet, and you will figure it out. Just sit where you think you sit.
I would like to share a few examples with you about what I mean about PACS and music being universal languages. Because I am the music teacher at Finley, I have to get through all of my academic curricula in 45-minute increments, usually 6 times per day. I also do daily breakfast duty, weekly lunch duty, and an after-school outside duty. Thus, I have the opportunity to see every student in the school at least once per week in my own academic setting, as well as seeing them in other areas of the school during recess, transitions, and leaving school for the day. We have a unique opportunity of teaching and working at Finley. We have approximately 10 different languages spoken, and 27 countries represented in our student body. One example of how PACS, like music being a universal language, is the use of the PACS harmonica. I will demonstrate. Very soothing sound, yes. My music room is staged in the lunchroom, affectionately known to us at Finley as the Finley Cafe. I teach kindergarten during one of the lunch periods four days per week. As any kindergarten teacher As any kindergarten teacher will tell you, planning lessons for them requires a great deal of time to keep them focused, actively learning, and physically moving when possible. My wife who teaches kindergarten at Robinson CLC has been instrumental to my success in teaching these students. When the harmonica is blown in lunch, my kindergarteners immediately react to it from the stage, which is quite a thing to see, because I'm not blowing the harmonica, they're blowing it in lunch. But my kindergarteners immediately put their hand up and their, one hand over their, over their lips. A second way PACS and music are universal language is during our emergency drills. Many of our students are refugees from war-torn countries. When the fire barrel rings, it can be traumatic for them, especially for our youngest students. The same is true for turning off the lights or loud clapping to get the students' attention. It can force any student, no matter his or her background or country of origin, to relive a past or current trauma. When I blow the harmonica right after the loud alarm, it lets the students know that everything is going to be okay. They once again know that they are in a loving, friendly, and most of all, a safe educational environment. A third way that PACS and music are universal languages is during my actual teaching of rhythms and foreign language songs. When a student comes to music for the first time with little or no English, I always review a few simple rhythms. Ta ta ti ti ta is a universal language of music and not specific to any particular culture. This immediately bonds that new student to the rest of the class as we are all speaking and clapping the same language. When teaching a song in Spanish or some other language, I remind the students that we are all PACS leaders here. So for the Spanish lyrics, some of our Spanish students will be taking the lead in terms of pronunciation and definitions of the song. Could Mr. Johnson do that? Yes. But it's much more impressive to remind, for the students to help each other. I also remind our non-Spanish-speaking students that they are now in the same learning situation as many of our ESL students. But how cool is it that one of their peers is so willing to offer assistance? This encourages music discussions as well as different cultural and language conversations outside of the classroom, which is all brought about by being in a school-wide PACS state of mind. In conclusion, PACS is a school-wide initiative which empowers our students to create the kind of students, classroom, and ultimately the type of school that they want to attend, and to give them a sense of pride about creating that type of environment. Further, it inspires them to be their best learners, best helpers, and best members of their communities. It is important that the entire school is trained in PACS, teachers and administrators alike, so that we have good consistency throughout the school in how we deal with various issues on a daily basis. We have a school motto at Finley CLC: One team, one goal. And by the entire school being in a PACS state of mind, we are truly living that model. On behalf of myself and Mrs. Ginn, we'd like to thank you for allowing us to present the PACS program today. Thank you very much and enjoy the rest of your evening.
Were there any questions I could answer or that teachers could answer as well? Dr. Akbar? And then Dr. Hall.
So I guess, can you take a step back and explain what PACS stands for or what it is? And how it originated? Because I guess I'm, I'm not seeing the connection, one, what it is, the background story, and the beginning part around reducing out-of-school suspension. Is this a new program? You said it was around for, for a very long time, so I'm trying to piece that together.
Yes, doctor, that's a great question. I'm going to ask them if they, I, I have a lot I can say about PACS, but I also want to see if they want to say it, because they're living it out each day. So do you guys want to take that?
I was one of the first round of teachers to go through the PACS training. And so it was offered and our, our guidance counselor had offered it along with our administrators. And so I had signed up simply voluntarily because they talked so highly of it. And when I went, and PACS is Latin for, for peace. And so the program has been around since the 60s. And the way I understand it, it's recently caught on in Ohio the past 10 years. And of course, I went with an open mind. And when I left, I, it was one of the only times in 20 years that I was absolutely moved to try something immediately the next day. And I got to be honest with you, because I have the manual here and I have the language here. But I thought, how am I going to do this with six-year-olds? How am I going to start this? How am I going to start the vision? And I would tell you that I took the risk to just open up that page in the manual, read the language of PACS, read what it says, and start with that vision. It is not a program. It goes along with your curriculum. It's not a new curriculum. It is not a new program. It is a way of presenting a vision to the students of how they want their classroom to be. And from there, it extends out into the larger context of the whole entire school. So though, there were several of us that went first, there were a core group of people that volunteered to go. And when we came back and, and raved about it and tried it, there was just a difference in the way the students conducted themselves. All students in, at Finley, they walk in PACS. And if one, eh, you're going to have those, right? And, and as I said before, you focus on the good, you focus on the positive. It's a language that you use, it's an approach, not really a program. So I wasn't asked to do really mu, anything much different than, of course, the curriculum that I'm charged to teach and the standards. So it wasn't changing any of that. It was really getting me to refocus on what was happening that was positive and good. And that vision is central to starting that. You ask the kids, what, again, what do you want to see here more? And, and what you have in those slides, I just wrote on the chart. And everything we do, we relate it to the vision. So if I'm going to start, for example, if I'm going to start that reading block, I can say, here's the plan that we agreed to. What did we agree to? How are we going to make this work? And then you go back after reading is over and you revisit that. Well, how did it go? What can we do differently? And so it isn't, it isn't, I, I, I'm really hesitant to use the word program because that makes it seem like it's a whole nother piece of the curriculum. It simply is a layer. It's a layer of what it sounds like. It's a layer of peace, and it's language that we use and how we look at the behaviors. Because the adverse things are spleens. I mean, I know that sounds like a weird word. It is a weird word and, and really, we have a saying in the classroom. I spleen, you spleen, she spleens, we all spleen. That's, those are the not-so-good things. But then what can we do about it? It happens. What, what can we do to change that? What can we do next time to make this better? You're always going back to the vision. So, and I, I would invite you to come and see it in action because it's, it's, it's very powerful to see it as school-wide. It's, it's, our cafeteria has changed dramatically. The way our students conduct themselves in the hall, the way they conducted themselves with substitute teacher. I came back and there was a note. I didn't know how to do these rotations, so I told the students, "Do what you normally do with Mrs. Ginn," and they did it. And it was in writing. And they did it because of PACS, because that's the PACS thing to do.
And, and Ms. Ginn, if I, and Mr. Johnson, if I could add to that. So PACS originated in Canada in the 1960s. And there's this huge amount of data that they were able to show, not only improved student behavior, but long-term, and this is why ADM boards love PACS, is because they were able to show long-term that students that went through PACS and were in the PACS way, I'm going to stop saying program now, in the PACS way, they had much less reduced negative as, uh, negative aspects in their life moving forward. So much less drug abuse, much less alcohol abuse. Other risky behaviors were reduced dramatically with kids that went through PACS programs. So like, our ADM board here loves PACS because it shows great data in that long-term way that very few programs can show. As a school district, we really like PACS because it's an absolute PBIS program. Like, everything they're saying, I could just say, "This is PBIS," and it would be the same. You would meet all the same areas. If you think about restorative practices, they just talked about restorative practices. They've talked about social-emotional learning. Every key buzzword in every popular program that's out right now, they just hit on it talking about PACS. PACS is one of those programs and one of those ways of doing PBIS, restorative practices, SEL, trauma-informed care, virtually all of those things. Because what they said, it's, it's teaching kids a process with which they're going to, to learn in school. And they are, the, the two that are here are very clearly rock stars in this, that they don't just do it as a process. They do it as more of a, a way of conducting their classroom in all ways that they do things, which is pretty amazing because these are two teachers that have been teachers for a while. And it's hard. If you asked me to do something completely different right now, it's going to be hard to do. PACS, when you first see it, it doesn't seem like you're like going to fall in love with it and start doing it. But when she was talking about it, I, I could feel the emotion as she was talking about it. When you, when you see it at first, it doesn't seem like that. And then when you start doing it, you see the response from kids. And I put this picture back up of the cafeteria, because I'm telling you, anyone that goes into an elementary cafeteria and they can blow a harmonica, and like, you can hear everything at that point. Like, the kids are deathly silent. How is that possible? But they do it. There's other schools that do this too with their cafeterias. That is amazing. It's very demonstrated that kids can be taught what the process is, what the expectations are. They can absolutely follow it with very simple cues, very simple rewards. Because what is your reward that you give teachers, or give students? I'm sorry, what is it?
The, the, the Great Granny Prizes and.
And what are those?
But they vary. They can be things like, all right, for 30 seconds, everybody dance as crazy as you want to do. For 30, any, anything you want to do for 30 seconds, as long as it's school-appropriate, of course.
Or they get to act like they're, or sound like their favorite animal. I mean, these are like the simplest rewards that cost nothing. But kids in this age range of K to 3, and I will argue in ages beyond that, they love that. Like, that's an amazing reward for them. And they can get kids to do this in the cafeteria for that simple reward. Dr. Hall?
Yeah, thank you. So first off, thank you for that fantastic presentation. Definitely, and, and thank you also for the, for the additional clarification about the origin story of PACS. I think that was very helpful for us as well, because I, because I didn't know either. So thank you for that. My question goes, Mr. Ramblin, goes back to you. You said that, that you were going to answer the question, "How?" So we went from the 621 to 475. I just, I'm interested in, I, I think I understand the "how" in Finley, but I'm interested in the "how" at the district level. You know, so when I see that precipice of, of, of a drop, it makes me wonder what, what other techniques or programs other schools were employing to help get that number down. Alternatively, or is it a situation where we've found other alternatives to, to suspensions that we're employing? And then the last part of my question is, is, did it also involve, on the slide with the top 10 incident types, did it also involve, did we sort of reconfigure definitions? For example, you know, behavior disruption is arguably subjective. So I'm just wondering, like, were there some realignment about how we define certain things? So again, I know, I know there are a lot of questions that I'm happy to re-ask any, any part of that, but, but thank you.
No, I, I'm very happy that you came back. I was trying to trick you in saying the question and then having these two amazing people talk so then you wouldn't think of that. But that, that is the question. And that's, that's the question everybody in this room should ask. It is the question the state should ask every single district at the end of this year. Because there, there are simple ways to reduce numbers, but there are meaningful ways to reduce numbers. Finley's given you an example of a meaningful way to reduce numbers. And I think as a district, one of the things we're always sensitive to is that each building's unique. And we don't try to cookie-cutter things in this district and just say, "Every K to 3 teacher, you're doing PACS right now, good luck, go have fun." We don't do that. We offer, what are some different options? And then we enable the school and their teams and their administrators to make those decisions, what's going to fit. So we have a, a cafeteria of options, a menu of options, like PACS and like CHAMPs. And there's a, there's an endless amount with restorative practices, with every building doing PBIS by strengthening the pre-PBIS teams. All those different areas, I will tell you, PACS in the K to 3 realm is, it, to me, is a phenomenal opportunity as a school district. It, it's challenging in the aspect of, it takes time to train people. It's not cheap to train people. I'm not saying it's easy for people to do. But when people buy in, when staff members buy into it, like the two that are here tonight, it's a pretty phenomenal thing. So what I would tell you is that school buildings are doing it, and they're doing it in truth. They're actually reducing numbers. They're meaningfully reducing suspensions, not just looking the other way, but trying to impact the behavior a different way. And you think about K to 3, you're talking about five-year-old to nine-year-old kids. Very clearly, none of us sit in here and think we should just suspend them and send them home. That's, that's not going to be the best answer. And I think that's why the state made the change. But then the hard work is then, what do you do instead? Preventatively, they're doing that preventative work upfront so that they're not getting to suspensions. And Miss Sibbit and Miss Bennington, the administrators at the school are back there. And I'm sure they're thankful every single day for the work that they're doing because they're not just getting kids sent to them to be suspended. They're probably getting kids sent to them and how can they can help change their behavior and keep them in class. So that's, that's phenomenal. But it's doing the meaningful work. We have, we have a continuum of options though, too, because there are some kids with repeated disruption, with failing to make adjustments as they've been through various programs or various interventions. Then we would use our SOAR program, which is an alternative program. Special ed, the same thing. Special, students on IEPs, they would look at the special ed, having an IEP meeting, looking at various different interventions. Maybe that's then a kid that, maybe it's a now, a class, a now, a situation where the student needs to be in a now classroom. So it's looking at per student, each student, each discipline incident, and how do we most impact the student behavior to correct it so they can be in school and learn?
Yeah, thank you. So a quick follow-up to that. So I would find it very valuable to hear in, in some, with some specificity, to your point, what other schools are doing to combat it. So I think this was a great example, but with your point, I would love to, I, I'd love to hear about what other schools are doing, you know, from a programmatic or interventional standpoint. And then, and then also too, I was looking here at the top 10 incident types. And I saw that fighting, fighting increased. So I was trying to reconcile the overall drops and what looks like, you know, in overall sort of large improvements. I was reconciling, reconciling that with the, with the increase in fighting. I didn't know if you had any insights with regard to that.
I, I don't have any great insight to that. The one thing I would always say about fighting is, that code is very specific. As we changed the code, I don't know, four or five years ago, we tried to make, some codes like fighting are very specific now. We used to have a very generic code that covered fighting. Fighting now is, it's literally, every fighting incident represents two kids. Because if somebody was fighting, they were fighting with somebody. So if you suspend me for fighting, then you must have also suspended Mr. Wamis for fighting because that's who I was fighting. So there's two students per incident. And sometimes, over the years, that code gets confused in how it gets reported outside the district. So I'm always really careful to explain that, that like each fight is actually two kids. I don't have any great insight. I mean, I, I would say it's something as a district, we need to continue to do mediations with kids and try to prevent things before they happen. But I don't, I don't have some great reason why it's gone up by 17, I think was the number.
Fantastic. And then, I'm sorry, I'm hogging the time. I'm, I'm sorry, I did have one more, I lied, sorry. And then also too, in trying to sort of help you with, help you with that question, I mean, I didn't know if there was maybe a certain school or schools that, 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 as, that are, that really are an outlier. So, so overall, it's coming down, but there was sort of one school that had some, you know, some indigenous issues that maybe weren't accounted for. And maybe that's part of the reason why, you know, just me sort of commenting there. Then also too, if I, you know, what I don't see, and I'm interested to see. Then also too, if I, you know, what I don't see, and I'm interested to see, is a metric or something that, that sort of outlines sort of teacher perception, right? So, so this gives the perception to those of us who are here, you know, that there's been an overall reduction in incidence, right? You know, with suspensions and whatnot, decreases in behavior that's disruptive. I'm curious to see like how that would impact or how that's impacted teacher perception in some of these schools. So if I were to go talk to teachers and, or if we were to survey them, right, would they say that they feel or believe that there's been a reduction in incidents? Or would they say that, you know, things largely feel the same to me? You know, so I'm just interested around, as a follow-up, you know?
Yeah, that's a good, those are good, both good items.
Ms. Mansfield.
Just real briefly, I had the pleasure of getting to see a PACS classroom last year. I actually went with Jerry Craig from the ADM and Paul Prentice from Summit County Council because they wanted to see it. And actually, I got to see it at Cyberling. Now I wish I'd gone to Finley as well because this sounds fantastic. And they, I didn't get to see the school-wide part that you have. And obviously, this takes staff buy-in. And we just actually happened to talk about this during our instructional policy phone call the other day about how staff buy-in is really important. Do you, are all of the teachers at Finley using this? And do you feel like you have enough training for everyone? If not, and would you like to see this in others, other schools? I mean, we do have a transient, fairly transient population, not as much out of North Hill, right? I mean, most of our folks stay put on North Hill. And so we don't see them moving around as much. But if they then go to another school on the other side of town and they're used to this great program and this calming effect of the harmonica, and now that's gone, I just want to see what, how you feel about that buy-in and the training and the
I absolutely believe in that. And I think that kind of helps with the consistency, just like when we have in the instrumental program, when the student has an instrument over here, we make sure the instrument follows them, that kind of thing. If we have the PACS program everywhere, it will work everywhere. And it's never more prevalent, if you come into the school and you see a new kid come in the school who has not been in the PACS program, how that student is affected by the rest of our students. Even if that student has no English, it is so apparent on how the students behave and the love they give to the new student, that that student always immediately feels the love, even if he or she doesn't speak the language. So yes, I would absolutely see it all over would be a benefit to the entire system.
I believe there are only three staff members currently at Finley that have not been trained. And so we would love the opportunity to get 100%. Our administrators went, specials, teachers, everybody, we've really embraced it. One of the nice things about PACS, when you go to the PACS training and we receive the support from the PACS mentor who regularly comes to the school, is that everybody is in a different place of implementation. And so there are some school-wide things that in order to help motivate people to keep using it, they do see the difference in the hallways, they do see the difference in the cafeteria. Because in those transitions, when the students come back to you, they're calm, they're ready to learn. Where they're coming back from the cafeteria, it isn't, for lack of a better term, it isn't a fight anymore to say, okay, you're not on the playground anymore, you're not in lunch anymore, blah, 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 and all that negative stuff. They're coming back ready to learn because they've just done the PACS quiet signal, they just walked in, they're ready to go with the afternoon math block or whatever it is. And so we just recently had one of our teachers say, oh, it's working for 90% of my class. And we just, out of the blue, just said that. It was, it was amazing to see that kind of reception from other people who went after the first group went. It just seems, it's like a pebble in the pond, it really took off. And we're not, you know, we're in the process. And the nice part about that PACS training is they recognize that. They don't tell you to do everything at once, and they give you the opportunity to build on what works. So they'll say, try one thing. Of all of these things that you learned today, try to implement one and be consistent enough. And when that works, go to the next and go to the next. So it's non-threatening and it's, and the ease of use, I can't talk enough about it. It's a wonderful thing.
One other thing I think I remember is that there's a parent component to this as well. And then they take it home and they can use it. One of the things the teacher did was that they helped explain, you know, especially what, is it a spleen?
Spleen.
Okay. So the, so the parents understood what that was because the kids were coming home and using some of this terminology. So there was a parent component. And being able to use the, use that consistency even at home was really, really helpful in the classroom that I went to. So I thought that was interesting.
And really, the ultimate thing is to say to children who are in trauma for, for whatever reason, and we do have a lot here, I mean, from, you could list a whole number of things. We do have a drug epidemic in Summit County. But to say, to give the children tools, and they don't have to be bound by their circumstances, they don't have to be bound by that. There are different choices. And PACS gives them the tools. A PAC school gives them the tools not to be bound by their circumstances, but to choose, to choose better for themselves and to ultimately better their community, better the world. It grows and it works.
And since we're all working together, I mean, as a staff, if some doesn't work for some other person during a planning period, we can go in and we can teamwork things together and just try and see, well, this is how I did it in my class and it worked for your class in music or it worked here, let's try it this way. And it might be a simple thing of just adding singing to do something. Like I often sing, I sing every day, all day, I sing all my instructions. And the kids are singing opera coming down the halls. And just that simple thing of singing Happy Birthdays in the morning or singing, you just hear singing all through the building now. But that's a simple thing that you can do. It just, it just makes it different for the kids and makes it more fun and gets them in the mode to learn.
Other questions?
I just want to know, will this work on 17-month-old children? Just out of curiosity.
Start of the world.
That's right.
The music component, I'm sure will.
You could do a harmonica.
Okay. I appreciate that.
Any other questions for our presenters? Thank you so much. Great presentation. Thank you, Mr. Ramler.
Thank you.
All right. With that, we are in need of a motion for approval of our previous meeting minutes from the regular, special meeting of January 24th and the regular meeting of January 27th, 2020.
Still moved.
Second.
We have a motion and a second on approval of the meeting minutes. Any comments, questions, or discussion? Hearing none, roll call please.
Ms. Autry?
Yes.
Mr. Bravo?
Yes.
Dr. Hall?
Aye.
Mrs. Mansfield?
Yes.
Mrs. McKittrick?
Yes.
Dr. Akbar?
Yes.
Mr. Alexander?
Yes.
All right. Superintendent's recommendations, personnel?
Mr. President, I wish to recommend approval of the personnel recommendations presented in categories five through 16.
Still moved.
We have a motion and a second on personnel recommendations. Are there any comments, questions, or discussion? Hearing none, roll call please.
Mr. Bravo?
Yes.
Dr. Hall?
Aye.
Mrs. Mansfield?
Yes.
Mrs. McKittrick?
Yes.
Dr. Akbar?
Yes.
Mr. Alexander?
Yes.
Ms. Autry?
Yes.
Consent?
Yes, Mr. President. There we go. I wish to recommend approval of the resolutions and motions presented in category 21. I know in item 21.3, we addressed that at the Joint Board of Review. And then item 21.4 regarding the certification of the Innovation Generation scholarships, I know there were a couple of questions. One had to do with the amount of rent that's been paid at the Central Howard Building that we're leasing for last fiscal year was $371,752. And just to refresh your memories, in 2012, we got permission from the state legislature and the governor's office to sell Central Howard to the University of Akron. In exchange for that sale, we established the Innovation Generation Scholarship, which started at $13.5 million in tuition credits. With this certification today, we have approximately $10,472, $72,814 in scholarship credits left.
And there were some, there were other questions too about sort of a census or a breakdown of those numbers. And I know that the superintendent's going to provide that to us as well.
Yeah, that's going to be taken up in the Instructional Policy Committee will have an in-depth review. We have to wait on some information from the University of Akron that they would have that we don't. Like how many are eligible for Pell Grants? How many students, you know, from each of our high schools that are still in the program? How many students have dropped out and a demographic breakdown of those students?
All right. With that, do we have a motion on the consent agenda?
Still moved.
Second.
We have a motion and a second on the consent agenda. Are there any comments, questions, or discussion? Hearing none, roll call please.
Dr. Hall?
Aye.
Mrs. Mansfield?
Yes.
Mrs. McKittrick?
Yes.
Dr. Akbar?
Yes.
Mr. Alexander?
Yes.
Ms. Autry?
Yes.
Mr. Bravo?
Yes.
And business affairs?
Mr. President, I wish to recommend approval of the Business Affairs recommendations presented in category 23.
Still moved.
Second.
We have a motion and a second on the Business Affairs recommendations. Are there any comments, questions, or concerns or discussion there? Hearing none, roll call please.
Mrs. Mansfield?
Yes.
Mrs. McKittrick?
Yes.
Dr. Akbar?
Yes.
Mr. Alexander?
Yes.
Ms. Autry?
Yes.
Mr. Bravo?
Yes.
Dr. Hall?
Aye.
Superintendent's report?
No report this evening.
Treasurers report?
We had a couple of board members ask about the follow-up from the Ed Choice expansion legislation that hit both the House and the Senate last week. As some of you know, I was down there for the debate last Thursday night up until 11:00 PM for the House and Friday night until about 5:30. How do you explain that folks weren't playing nice in the sandbox, maybe is the best way to explain, explain this? Of the nine recommendations that a Education Choice Committee put together, was made up of school administrators and school board members from around the state of Ohio, seven of those nine recommendations became null and void after those debates. And only one really has any traction in what is now being called as the House-passed Senate Bill 89, of which we talked a little bit about today and a couple of you emailed. And that is the removal of the performance-based components of the vouchers and the state, as passed by the House, the state paying for any expansion of vouchers in future bienniums. The question was raised as to whether or not this board should support publicly the passage of Senate Bill 89 as passed by the House. I think at this point in time, it would be my recommendation that we don't come out and publicly support that, but we engage in the debate. There are some good components of it as removing the performance base and the report card units that follow. So instead of 1,200 buildings in Ohio, it reverts back to 400 buildings. But the threshold would be raised to 250% of the federal poverty level up from 200. So in a sense, if we are endorsing that, we are endorsing the expansion of additional vouchers, which from our original resolution, we stand by that our taxpayers have never said that it is okay for me to pass operating levies to support those vouchers, which is what we said in our resolution. I think in all likelihood, this debate, I looked tonight on the Senate's schedule, and this is up for committee debate almost every day for the next two weeks. If Senate Bill 89 is as passed, I have to keep reminding myself, as passed by the House, is the starting point, and the Senate has said it will likely not support that, then we could be looking at a lengthy debate for the next 30, 40 days as this unfolds. And it, and it will likely not result in the current passage of that Senate Bill 89. So it could have additional impact on us that's even more expansion thereafter or grade card components. So we will stay closely connected between the superintendent and myself from the report card and the committees that he served on to the steering committee and keep you posted. But hopefully that gets you up to date and on the current debate. Thank you.
Ms. Mansfield?
So to me, what this kind of says is that, so now it's kind of getting kicked to a poverty issue rather than a grade card issue, right? So doesn't it, part of, part of the outcry that seemed to happen from the last bill was because this was suddenly going to affect suburban districts. I mean, to be honest, they've, they've not really been as worried about this until this, this last bill. But does this not kind of kick it out of their side of the goal and back toward ours? We're still in the same position. We're probably still going to have the issue. The other thing is, in rural districts, there may, who also have high poverty, they may or may not have a private school that would qualify for a voucher. Whereas in an urban district, we are going to have those available to those students. So I'm just wondering, are we, I'm hoping that we're keeping our suburban brothers and sisters on our side for this because that's kind of the upswell that I found statewide with this last change was that they were paying attention. Because if it didn't affect them now, it, it could with this, you know, with one report card. Are they still engaged, I guess, is ultimately that question?
One of the leading, and well said by the way, but one of the leading advocacy groups has been the Alliance for High Quality Education. They've had the strongest voice in Ohio at the, with the legislature about this, and they deserve a lot of credit. And they are largely made up of high-wealth suburban districts. They've been very active. And I would say that they're going to remain active in this conversation. I had, when I was in Columbus last week, I had lunch with their director. So they're, they're maintaining that. I do not think that they will give that up and say that they'll settle now, but.
Any other questions for the treasurer? All right. Committee reports, legal contracts, and board policy?
Yes, so the legal contracts and board policy committee met on January 29th, 2020 with myself, Bruce Alexander, and Diana Autry, and Ryan Pendleton present. And basically, we're going to highlight a few of those points today. We had the first reading of a few policies that was reviewed by our committee, one being school safety and emergency situations at schools. And those policies will be brought forth to the board for a second reading in February. We also had a policy review. So the committee reviewed several of our district policies, such as a new policy which we are looking at, which is the naming policy, the equity policy, and transparency policy, as well as revisions to the policy pertaining to public participation at board meetings. The equity policy was something that calls for measurable and accountable standards to be shared with the public. And so as a committee, we asked that an updated, update, the data be compiled to, for us to review. And then also Bruce Alexander brought forth the potential naming policy for us to review. And then I'll pass it off to Mr. Alexander to talk about what all that was about.
Okay. The naming policy, we came up with this because we needed to have a The naming policy, we came up with this because we needed to have a policy to name buildings, rooms, libraries, and so forth. So we drafted a policy, which we are still in the process of reviewing and looking at so that we can have a policy that will give us some guideline in order to do that. And we've also looked at some of the colleges and universities who have naming policies that was looked at, and we kind of combined some of that as well. The public participation policy was reviewed and several suggestions were given by Dr. Akbar. And it was suggested that the policy be reviewed by our legal team and brought to the board for future discussion, which we want to do. And we want to make sure that once we get to the point that we're ready for everyone to look at this, and we looked at legal and so forth, that we bring it back so every board member can look at it and give some input if they need to at that point in time. And that will help, I'm sorry, along with that input administration and staff will also, and that will be given to us at the board meeting on the 10th of February. Neola has released an update in January 2020. The policies that this update will be shared and administrators to begin to look at and review because administrators, they know what's going on in their departments who are involved in this. And so what they need to do is look at it first, see what they need to construct, bring it to the policy committee. And once the committee gets it, then we'll look at it. And then we will make sure we get that as well to the board as well, so they can look at it and if we have any questions, updates, and so forth, we can do that as well. We also have for the first reading of three readings prior to approval, revised bylaw, 00169.1, public participation at board meetings, new policy naming slash renaming facilities, revised policy 8400, school safety, revised policy 8420, emergency situations at school. And this is the first reading of three readings. Thank you. That's our report.
Thank you. Any questions for the legal and board policy committee? Thank you. Instruction, or financing capital management?
Sure, thank you. So by way of background, recall that Finance Committee usually meets monthly, and we've increased the cadence of that. So now we meet every other week. So we meet every Monday at board meetings, and we met today. Those who were present were myself, Ms. Autry, Mr. Bravo, Ms. McKittrick, Dr. James, Mr. Pendleton. And, and we spent the first half of that meeting largely walking through the appropriations process. So that is, so that is to say, how and where we spend money. I think it's important that, you know, that there's, that we all better understand that as we, as we move forward. And spent a lot of time with Mr. Pendleton, sort of walking us through the, really the plethora of required documents that the district is, you know, must produce and file. And some examples of that would be the beginning appropriations report, the final appropriations report, the tax budget, you know, the, the budgeting module, and also thinking about, you know, the certificate of estimated resources. And so, so we spent a lot of time, we sort of digging through all those. And so I'll pass it off to Ms. Autry for the rest of the update.
And then also, we received a copy of the fiscal financial calendar. I'm just listing the various due dates of the many different documents that we looked over. Additionally, the committee received a digital version of the Ohio Auditor of State Uniform School Accounting System User Manual, which outlines how school districts must code the many budget lines. So lots of information that we're absorbing and I look forward to learning more so that I can share more. Thank you.
Thank you. Any questions for financing capital management? Hearing none. Instructional policy and student achievement?
Okay. We had a meeting via phone on Tuesday, the 4th, and we had some old business and new business. A couple of the things we talked about was the Kent State University Computer Science Grant, and that is to expand course offerings in grades K through 12 and up to meet the demands of the local workforce. And also a college credit plus partnership with the University of Cincinnati, where our kids would be in a one-year program, and then they would automatically be admitted to the University of Cincinnati. And the credits that they would take at Stark State would be accepted at the University of Cincinnati.
And last week, we had, we had an update from a meeting that was held last week with Carla Chapman, Pat Shite from AEA. They hosted the first orientation for the steering committee for the Get to School campaign. If you all remember, the Get to School campaign is a community-wide effort to improve student attendance that's sponsored, sponsored by the Browns Foundation, and we'll receive, be receiving those updates through instructional policy and being kept up to date by Ms. Chapman and bringing those, those meetings, and we'll rotate our attendance on the steering committee. So we'll continue to bring those updates to the board. This last meeting, over 50 teachers, parents, students, custodians, secretaries, administrators, and community members attended, including community organization summit, such as the Summit Education Initiative, United Way, AMHA, Summit County Juvenile Court, Summit County Jobs and Family Services, Akron Children's, Minority Behavioral Health, Child Guidance and Family Solutions, Red Oak Behavioral Health, Love Akron, the Akron Council of PTAs will all be represented as well. So that's the who's who, I think, of the county, pretty much. They're going to be meeting monthly from March to August, and it'll help determine their, that'll help determine their frequency for the next school year. And we want to especially thank Pat Shite and her lead representative, Councilor Dan Richards, for co-chairing this campaign. And extend our heartfelt thanks to the Browns Foundation and Burgess and Burgess for the technical expertise that they're providing in training the team how to run this evidence-based campaign.
Thank you. Any questions for instructional policy and student achievement? Hearing none. There currently is no unfinished business, at least items on the agenda for today. We do have some new business that was mentioned briefly through instructional policy and student achievement. And the first item is the Early Information Technology Program Agreement?
Yes, Mr. President. As reported out by our Instructional Policy and Student Achievement Committee, I'm requesting approval of the agreement between Akron Public Schools and the University of Cincinnati to begin the Early Information Technology Program.
And that's item 30.1 in your agenda. Do we have a motion?
Still moved.
Second.
We have a motion and a second on the Early Information Technology Program Agreement. Are there any comments, questions, or discussion? Hearing none. Roll call, please.
Mrs. McKittrick?
Yes.
Dr. Akbar?
Yes.
Mr. Alexander?
Yes.
Ms. Autry?
Yes.
Mr. Bravo?
Yes.
Dr. Hall?
Aye.
Mrs. Mansfield?
Yes.
And item 30.2, administrative and non-bargaining employee salary increases and health care plan changes.
Yes, Mr. President. I wish to recommend approval of a resolution to provide administrative and non-bargaining employee salary increases and health care plan changes that were approved with the Akron Education Association contract, that those changes be applied to these classes of employees.
Still moved.
Second.
We have a motion and a second on item 30.2. Are there any comments, questions, or discussion? Hearing none. Roll call, please.
Dr. Akbar?
Yes.
Mr. Alexander?
Abstain.
Ms. Autry?
Yes.
Mr. Bravo?
Yes.
Dr. Hall?
Aye.
Mrs. Mansfield?
Yes.
Mrs. McKittrick?
Aye.
Is there anything else before we, before I ask for a motion to recess into executive session? Any other comments, questions, or discussion? Hearing none. Then pursuant to Ohio Revised Code, Section 121.22G3, to meet with legal counsel to discuss disputes involving the board and/or the school district that are the subject of pending or imminent court action, and Section 121.22G4, to discuss negotiations or collective bargaining sessions with employees concerning compensation and other terms and conditions of employment. Do we have a motion?
Still moved.
Second.
We have a motion and a second for executive session. Any final comments, questions, or discussion? Hearing none. Roll call, please.
Mr. Alexander?
Aye, aye.
Ms. Autry?
Yes.
Mr. Bravo?
Yes.
Dr. Hall?
Aye.
Mrs. Mansfield?
Yes.
Mrs. McKittrick?
Aye.
Dr. Akbar?
Yes.
We are in recess.
Would help us, we were all.